All right, I'd like to, good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 2nd Buncombe County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll begin with our video. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes from our sheriff's deputies on their way out or now, and it will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the board: in accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote. And we'll move into our consent agenda. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this evening's consent agenda? Commissioners?
One question.
Yes.
On the tax collection report, on the personal property, the FY26 collection is significantly lower than FY25. The rest of it looks fairly similar, but could you speak to that, Jennifer?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for that question. So, in the month of July, our focus is on the previous year, but sometimes there are discovery bills for personal property that assessment may put out, and sometimes there may not be. So there are a lot of moving pieces with personal property more so than real estate that can create a significant difference in a month where not a lot of activity has occurred.
Okay.
Does that help?
It does help, thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, are there other questions? All right, there being none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented?
Certainly.
Commissioner Sloan, second, Commissioner Horton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move forward with our agenda as presented. We come to public comment, and I do not have anyone that has signed up for public comment. We do have some folks for the public hearing later. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at public comment that did not sign up? All right. We'll keep moving right along on our agenda. All right, we have a good news moment with Rafael Batista from Strategy and Innovation.
Good evening, Commissioners. I always enjoy these good news items. It's one of the favorite parts of my job, so appreciate the county manager letting me share some good news. Every year, the National Association Counties hosts the NACO Achievement Awards to recognize as county governments across the United States who are doing innovative best practice work. And today, for the fifth year in a row, Buncombe County has submitted several applications, and once again, every application we submitted, we want an award for. So, really big. It's always really great to see the hard work of our staff, and in this case, our volunteers as well from the community being recognized at a national level for the work they're doing. So, what I'm doing today is just go through the four awards. I'll go one by one. I'll share a little bit about each of these programs, and then a program representative they want can come up and say some words. So the first one is Buncombe County's Camp Rio, which is run through our Agricultural Land Resources Program, but essentially, it's a free summer camp for children who are the children of migrant farmers, children who are in our foster care system, where not only do they get free childcare, free food, summer camp for a week during the summer, but they also get to learn more about nature, the rivers, agriculture, and really get connected and get a sense of being. When I was talking to the staff who worked on this program, they talked about a lot of these kids are kids who don't have a lot of sense of place and belonging because they tend to move around a lot, and this program is really aimed to get them a sense of belonging. So, I don't know if anyone from Ag and Land wants to come up and say some words about this amazing program, but it's a hidden gem that the county offers.
Thank you all. We're just happy that Camp Rio and a program that is rooted in environmental literacy and restorative outdoor experience for under-resourced communities has found national recognition. We just want everyone to feel safe and connected to the land that they're standing on.
Yeah, and I'd also just like to recognize that these programs do not come into being in isolation. We want to thank our program partners in Buncombe County School System, migrant education program, as well as Amy Huntsman in our Buncombe County Government, HHS, our departmental leadership in Jennifer Harrison, and then our county support, your values and support really allow us to be able to do these programs. Basically, everything that we do is in collaboration with our wonderful partners, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Our second program is Buncombe Connections Hope Healing Community Health Education, which is really a comprehensive, community-driven approach to help people heal through the crisis, the opioid crisis in the community. It's a partnership between Office Equity and Human Rights and our Health and Human Services Department, which really was around how to help people dealing with this crisis obtain long-term healing and resiliency. It was done not just in English, but in Spanish, Russian, and Ukrainian, so it could benefit all of the community. And I would invite representatives from Health and Human Services and Office of Equity and Human Rights to come up and say anything they want to share.
So from the Office of Equity and Human Rights to Hope and Healing and Buncombe Connections was a great program that is still ongoing. We had Hope and Healing cards, as Rafael said, in English, Spanish, Russian, and Ukraine, and we give them out at different events, tabling, other objects like that of the opportunities. We had a series of events called opioids in the community. We did one for the black community, Hispanic community, and one specifically called Permission to Breath to help support parents, specifically mothers who have lost children to overdose, and that has spread into the South Side healing space, which I talked to you about a couple of months ago. That is now open and actively seeing community in helping and support. So those are just a few things from the equity side of this project.
I'd like to step in. Victoria Riker, Behavioral Health Manager for Buncombe County, and we are excited to partner with a number of our departments to make this happen and to lift the voices of our community members who have experienced recovery. And I'll use this as a shameless plug for the WNC Recovery Rally on September 19th from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at PAC Square, an opportunity to hear stories of recovery and the many pathways that people find their journey. So I hope you all can join. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Next up, we have Reading Mentors Program, which is done at INCA Candler Public Library. It's a program created by youth services librarian there, Kate Spratt, and the branch manager, to bring in men from around the community to do storytime, to read to children. As a father of young children in the community, it's one program I personally enjoy taking my kids to because they get to learn about different things. I will say, I kind of wish my daughter hadn't made me take her to the bug one because I'm not a big fan of holding bugs, and I don't like to hold the bugs, but it's a really great program. It's great to see so many men in our community show up for the children and to see the children, the excitement they have there. It's just another showcase of the great work our library does, and I don't know if our library director wants to share some words about that program.
I'll just put the invitation out there. We're always recruiting new men for reading mentors. I'm pleased, proud, and pleased to say I was the inaugural reading mentor. I was soon followed by my boss, Assistant County Manager Tim Love. So, any gentlemen up there this evening who are interested, you can reach out to me. We'd love to have you be a reading mentor. All credit for this program goes to Kate Spratt and Aaron Parcells, they're two super dynamic library staff members. This program earlier this year was also recognized by the North Carolina Public Library Directors Association as their Large Library System Program of the Year, and one of the criteria that that's evaluated on is cost efficiency and whether the program can be easily replicated. So, our staff have been sharing the good news of reading mentors to other library systems across the state, and we're hoping to kind of elevate it to a national level because we think it's a fantastic model. It can be easily replicated, low cost, big impact. So, thank you for your support. I hope to see some of you at a future reading mentors program.
Our last awardee is the Family Assistance Center that was stood up by the Register of Deeds Office with county staff, Register of Deeds staff, and a whole bunch of community volunteers who you see right here. Some people probably walked in and thought we were going to have a really long public comment session, but really what it is, is a lot of folks who volunteered during Helene who wanted to show up today with this program. I think the community knows really well what this program is. They did so much during Helene, helping people find loved ones, helping people find information, help with water and sanitation. Instead of hearing it from me, I'm going to pass it off to Drew. I think Drew's got some volunteers who are also going to share a little bit about their experience.
Volunteer to the Family Assistance Center? It's all right, I gave you permission. Thanks, Commissioners. Come on, come on, come on, come on. Commissioners, thanks for having us here. Rafael, thank you for your work and helping us get this organized. There's this moment, I was at the, after we finally were able to cut our way out of our own neighborhood, I was going to go volunteer for Avril at one of the many locations where people needed help and shelters, and we didn't have any idea what was going on out there. And I bumped into, so made it to the Emergency Operations Center thanks to Parker Sloan telling me where it was, and when I finally get down there, you know, you can start to realize how bad things were. The world didn't know at that time. And Avril said, Drew, you're the Register of Deeds, can you create a registry for us? Like, that's a pretty loose term of the word, registry, but sure. And essentially, our emergency services were getting overwhelmed with calls from people who couldn't reach out to their loved ones. No one, as all of y'all remember, no one could reach out and talk to people who are out of the county. You didn't necessarily know who was okay on the other side of the county. And 911 needed to be available for the most critical matters. And so, we quickly, I started pulling people in from off my street, and Paul Choi helped me set up a database that went live, and what we thought would, you know, we'd get a few hits. Once Lillian's team put it out there on 88.1 and to the internet and the world, people from all over the world started asking us to check in on their loved ones, and we realized we needed to exponentially ramp up being able to check on these people who've now asked us, will you go check on my loved one? And so, this team of people showed up behind me and said, we'd be glad to help you organize that. And we had everyone from Buncombe County Search and Rescue coming in to check in with us to ask for assignments. We had the guest, Sonia Gaucho's, these cops from Gaston County. There was multiple, yeah, Erin had her own SWAT team working underneath her. That's not what she does for a living. Erin's a health communicator. And it was fascinating to see how each of these people had a critical role, specifically our data nerds like Will and his team. How do you suss out tens of thousands of data requests and effectively get to the most important ones that are urgent and there could be something critical on the other side of that? You need data nerds to help you suss that out, and we had the best in the business. So, there was this challenging moment of like trying to figure out how to help people, and the more and more we put it out there, the community kept showing up. What started off as a few volunteers on that first night turned into dozens the next day, and then we had thousands shortly thereafter. So, if anyone's listening to this on Facebook or online, please know how grateful this community is that you showed up to help people find their loved ones, to flush their dirty toilets, and to help people who are in need who didn't have help. Thank you, Commissioners, for supporting us and for Avril giving us some leeway to take over Sulu County buildings, whether you knew that was happening or not. But thank you so much to everyone who showed up to be a part of this Family Assistance Center. Will, did you want to say one thing on the spot? Thank you guys for having us today.
Thank you. And that standing ovation was for our incredible volunteers across our community who, as you can tell, put your own needs aside during a terrible disaster to care for members of the community. Thank you all for doing that, and to our incredible staff across Buncombe County who every single day go above and beyond your job descriptions to provide incredible services and programs to members across Buncombe County. We appreciate every single one of you. Thank you, and congratulations, well deserved. Commissioner Bender, do you have a report this evening?
I would just add to the statements that you just made, and thank our volunteers and our staff for what they've done throughout Helene.
Your mic on.
It is. Okay. But thanking our volunteers and our staff for the work they've done throughout Helene and they do every single day. One of the reasons that we do apply for NACO is because we do fantastic work in Buncombe County, and sharing that on a national scale. To Rafael's point, the last five years we've submitted, I believe we're up to 13 awards now, and even Best in Class was, we won a Best in Class, and other counties take these and implement them in their community as well. So that's why we share what we do here in Buncombe County. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have a public hearing this evening, and our interim tax assessor, Eric Krieger, is here for our Schedule of Values.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you Commissioners. First off, I apologize for my voice. I'm a victim of the first week of school. Much better than I sound, so. Anyway, I'm here, just sad to try to find the clicker here. There it is. We present to you Schedule of Values, public hearing. First off, I just want to backtrack just a little bit, talk a little bit what we went over so far. General Statute 105317 lays out the entire process for the Schedule of Values, states the assessor must provide this board with the Schedule of Values in order for you to approve of it before January 1 of the year in which the reappraisal takes effect. So, general statutes, eye level, it acts as a guide for our assessment team and the appraisal team, explains the basics and requirements of the mass appraisal system, promotes equity assessments and transparency, so if it's not in the schedule, cannot do it. Now, real quick, I'll talk just a little bit about more of the things the Schedule of Values provides us. It defines the three approaches to value. That's the cost approach, unique properties that don't participate in the open market, government buildings, churches, specialized industrial properties, things like that. Sales comparison approach, your most common. It is for properties that do participate in the open market, some commercial, but mostly we think about single-family homes, vacant parcels. And then, the income approach, income-producing properties. That's going to be your apartments, your hotels, your office buildings, anything that rents. Those three approaches to value align to create our market-adjusted cost model. Now, real quick, I'll talk about what that is. That is construction costs. We collect construction cost data from our local builders, from cost manuals, all those kinds of resources. Pull those items together and generate a baseline cost of construction for structures in our county. And what else, what we do next is that's Sales Comparison Approach is what we do next. And that's when we apply market factors to parcel, to structures based on where they lie within the county and how they are participating in the open market. Okay? So, that brings me back to talk about market value just for a moment. I get this question a lot. It's market price, market value, and we do have that laid out in the Schedule of Values. So, market price does not always equal market value. If our home, a home in the county sells for $500,000 or $1.5 million, the assessment office cannot just apply that as the value. What we have to do is generate a market value from those transactions. So that means for homes that are similar to the subject property, we have to see what those homes are selling for within a general vicinity of that home. So we pull those sales together, and then we come up with a market value and assign it to these properties. Now, reappraisal and the Schedule of Values, it all just comes to our main goal, which is equalization. All aligns with that. So, equalization is making sure that we're treating different properties in the same manner, and we're making sure that they are getting a fair, equitable value based on what the statutes tell us, which is market value. So just, I like to say this, a home, my house, whether it's in Bent Creek, Hall Creek, Off Sweet and Creeks, you have to get those at 100% or as close as you can to market value. Of course, we have an acceptable range, but market value is what you would get for that home in an open market. All right. So, one next slide here. So, what you see here is a building calculation table. Every structure in the county has a sign to it, but before I dig into that, I want to talk a little bit about land value. So before we get to this point, we have to assign a land value. So, one of the things we did in this reappraisal is we stripped all the buildings off the parcels. We assessed them as vacant land, vacant lots, based on the market activity in the area in which those parcels lie, neighborhoods, and areas out in rural parts of the county. So we tracked sales over the previous years since the last reappraisal to assign a land value. We also updated our size adjustment tables, those kinds of items, those technical items that are defined in our appraisal system. So, on this table, once we've assigned that land value, pull up a typical single-family home, this is the same table as the example from the previous meeting. So, on the left of that table, you see the components, which are what make up a home, those items, or make up this structure. The data, that's what's in the home based on those components, 1,200 square feet of heated living area, one kitchen, two baths, those items. Now, one thing too is that you get down to the bottom of this, one thing to pay attention to is the construction quality, okay? So these, our Schedule of Values is a baseline, sets the baseline rates, so like a builder's grade home, something like that, a starter home, I think about that in my head. So that is typically at a C construction quality. This one here is a B, and you can see a factor of 1.25 assigned to it. So that denotes a higher quality of construction, there's higher end finishes in those homes, items like that. So, one of the things that we've revamped in this Schedule of Values is, I mentioned fine tuning in the last presentation, but I feel like I didn't get too far into that. What we've done is we've added more construction quality grades, and we've added a plus and a minus to each one of them. That allows the appraiser and to review the property and make a more detailed decision on each property that they review. So, one thing you'll notice as well is there's a new construction quality. It's a Q. It's a Q, that stands for, that's coded as a unique in our system. So what we've discovered is there are unique properties that sell in Buncombe County these days. We've pulled historic sales data since 2021, and we've found some unique parcels that are difficult to find comparable sales for. I mean, we're talking homes that have tilework imported from Italy, those kinds of items, you know, things like a whiskey room, things like that. So you want to make sure you see these sales, we have some of these sales, and we're able to build the Schedule of Values off those sales. If we don't have those sales, and we don't have that construction data or permitted information, we can't build the schedule off of it. So, in the end here, this is your typical calculation letter for every home, every building, every structure in Buncombe County. So, once you build all your data up, you apply your rates, which are defined in the schedule, and you land on a structured value. You can see in this case, and you subtract depreciation from that as well. And the land component, which I was talking about before, which has been researched, rates of, market rates have been applied. You put the building on top of that, that assigns your appraised value. Next, this is the real, the reason I'm here, is to ask this board to open the floor up for a public hearing. General Statute 105317 states that we should name the time and the place of a hearing on the proposed schedules to allow for folks to make public comment on it. And, so what's next? I'll touch on that real fast. Today, public hearing. The meeting on the 16th, September 16th, this board would meet to vote on whether or not to adopt the resolution of the Schedule of Values. We would publish a notice of adoption for four weeks, and then the appeal period will end on October 17th. That's all I have. And as I said earlier, I'm here to ask this board to open the floor for the hearing.
All right. We will open, thank you, Eric. We will open our public hearing at 5:29 p.m. We do have several people who have signed up to speak, and I will remind you of the public comment rules since we did not have public comment earlier. The time limit for individual comment is three minutes. Please state your name before you begin speaking. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters. This is your time to speak to us during the public hearing. There is no clapping, snapping, or booing aloud during public hearings. All right, and our-
Madam, sorry, Madam Chair, is it okay if we ask Eric questions after?
Yes, we'll come back to ask questions. Yes. Don't go too far, Eric. Our first person is Christina Shimrock.
Hello, my name's Christina Shimrock. Tonight, I'm here wearing many hats. I'm a parent of an ACS student, a member of Families at Bachelor City Schools, a community organizer for ACAe and BCae, and most importantly, for tonight's purposes, a homeowner. Tonight, I'm here to present a letter as a coalition of community organizations committed to fairness in public education funding, housing stability- to fairness in public education funding, housing stability, and equitable growth. We want to thank you for your leadership as Buncombe County prepares for the 2026 reappraisal. We recognize the substantial investments already made from new software and staff capacity, and we value your commitment to making this process stronger than in the past. At the same time, because property taxes are the backbone of our public schools, essential services, and neighborhood stability, the community needs reassurance that the system is both fair and transparent. We respectfully ask you that before adopting the Schedule of Values on September 16th, you consider the following steps. So the first is to publish both adjusted and unadjusted ratio studies. Ratio studies are the main tool for showing whether assessments are fair, but how they are run matters. Publishing both adjusted and unadjusted studies side by side for at least the past five years would give residents and decision makers the clearest, most honest picture of assessment accuracy across the county. Two, move toward more frequent reappraisals. As you know, Buncombe's median sales ratio has already dipped below the state's recommended threshold in recent cycles. That means inequities build up between reappraisals, with some residents paying more than their fair share. We ask you to consider moving the tax reappraisal to every two years. More frequent accurate appraisals also mean the county can increase revenue fairly, since property values will better reflect actual market conditions. This stability ensures public schools and essential services are funded consistently while maintaining taxpayer confidence. And third, increase transparency in the appeals process. We appreciate the county's expanded outreach efforts around appeals, but transparency about outcomes remains limited. Publishing information on how many appeals succeed, what types of properties tend to win, and the average reductions would reassure the public that the process is not only accessible, but also equitable across income levels and property types. Taken together, these steps will help ensure the 2026 reappraisal is accurate, consistent, and trusted by the public. They would also demonstrate Buncombe County's leadership in creating a property tax system that is transparent, fair, and capable of sustaining the public institutions, schools, housing, and community services that families depend on. We see this as a shared responsibility between county leadership and the community. Our coalition would welcome the opportunity to meet with you or the assessor's office staff to discuss these recommendations and explore how they can be adopted. With respect and appreciation, our currently, I have copies for each one of you, and our current coalition members are ongoing ACAe, BCae, Good Trouble WNC, Just Economics, Public School Strong, and FACS.
Thank you Christina, you may leave this with, with our clerk, Sarah. Thank you. Lenore Hagerty?
Hi, good evening. My name is Lanier Hagerty, I want to say thank you Commissioners, County Manager, and members of the Assessor's Office for being here today. A, I work as an urban planner, and I specialize in urban data analytics, and a few years ago, I was part of the research team behind the Just Accounting for Health Project, which was a study of property tax assessment practices in Buncombe County. Our findings revealed that a persistent assessment gap existed, which meant that lower value homes are often assessed at higher rates than more expensive ones. This creates a property tax system that is unfair, as the tax burdens are shifted away from owners of high-value homes onto those with lower value homes. I want to commend the assessor's office for the investments made in the upcoming reappraisal. New software, more staff, and updated modeling tools, these are important steps towards improving assessment accuracy and equity. But how will we measure progress? The research I was a part of a few years ago was built on the work of Dr. Christopher Berry at University of Chicago, who has written extensively on the importance of using unadjusted sales ratios to evaluate performance. This means looking at the original tax assessment before a property sells, without cleaning or correcting the data. This method gives the clearest picture of how fairly the system treats all properties. Tonight, I want to express my support for the asks we just heard from Coalition members, and in particular, reiterate two asks of the assessor's office. First, to evaluate the performance of the new system using unadjusted sales ratios data across the range of home values, and second, to make those results public. By embracing transparency and rigorous evaluation, Buncombe County has the opportunity to not only recoup millions of dollars in revenue without raising taxes, but also set a national standard for more equitable, data-informed property tax system. Thank you.
Thank you Lanier. Shanna Peel.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for your incredible work so far. My name is Shanna Peel, I'm a parent of three Asheville City Schools Cougars, a special education teacher in Buncombe County Schools, and the proud president of the Buncombe County Association of Educators. I am here now, because now more than ever, our community needs stability, for our schools, our libraries, our public health system, and the public infrastructure that keeps Buncombe strong. Every year, as a community, we increasingly face the uncertainties of knowing whether our schools will have the resources we need, whether libraries can stay open enough hours to serve families, or whether our roads and services will keep pace with growth. That uncertainty comes from one thing, unstable revenue. Our county has the opportunity right now, in this reappraisal process, to set the foundation for long-term stability through creating a fair and transparent process. Property taxes aren't just numbers on a page to our community, they are the backbone of our schools, the shelves of our libraries, and the sidewalks and services that make Buncombe a place people want to call home. When our revenue system is fair and transparent, people trust it, and when people trust it, we grow revenue equitably, not just, not through surprise tax hikes, not through cuts that shortchange children, but through a system that reflects real values in our community. That's what stability looks like. What I'm asking for today is simple, please make decisions outlined in the letter you received tonight from ACAe, BCae, and several other community organizations that ensure Buncombe County can generate stable, reliable funding year after year. This is about trust and fairness, and most of all, it's about the future of Buncombe County's children and families. I urge you to keep stability for public schools and public institutions at the center of every decision you make in this reappraisal process. Thank you.
Carson Bridges.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Carson Bridges, I'm an elementary school teacher with Asheville City Schools, a Buncombe County resident and a president, and the president of the Asheville City Association of Educators. Right now, we're facing incredible challenges. On top of the recovery from Helene, our state has still not finalized a budget, and our public goods are being threatened at the federal level. This is creating a frightening situation where our community is facing unexpected challenges. But one thing I know as a deeply rooted North Carolinian is that we take care of our own. In the face of these challenges, our county has the opportunity to make sure that we create a process that helps us get on stable ground. We know that property taxes are the backbone of our public goods. They ensure we have strong public schools, libraries, community programs, and infrastructure. These services are what makes Buncombe County a place with a strong community where people want to be. Tonight I am asking you to make your decisions on this process from a place of fairness, equity, and transparency. While I know taxes can be a difficult topic, when the process is fair and transparent, it creates community trust that our taxes are being used for the things that bolster our community. The letter you received from ACAe, BCae, and our community partners outlines ways for us to have a fair, equitable, and transparent process, a process that creates trust while providing the resources our community needs. The Buncombe County community deserves the best from our public goods and from our leaders. I thank you for your leadership during this period and this process, I ask that while making your decisions, you are keeping the children, families, and elders of our community in mind. I ask that you keep the stability and success of our public schools and public institutions at the center of all of your decisions. Thank you.
Jo Minicozzi.
Hi, for the record, Jo Minicozzi, founder of Urban Three, and a very excited citizen that we have so many people talking about the property assessment schedule today. As you know, about four years, five years ago, we did an analysis of, of the tax system and raised a lot of issues to many of you, you all here. We found significant issues in the, in the system, and you all are working forward to change things and amend it, which is great. I second, third, fourth, and fifth what the previous group said, let's have some transparency, let's see what's going on in the current system, let's evaluate it before we make decisions to adopt it. Mr. Craigor had a really important thing to say in the presentation, if it's not in the schedule, then we cannot do it. If it's not in the schedule, then we cannot do it. Those are critically important words in understanding, you all did the Keen Report, Mr. Keen gave, I think, 23 different recommendations on how to improve the process, this was raised back in June of 2024, and Mr. Miller said that he wouldn't be able to adopt it in the this schedule, he would, of 2025, he would have to wait until 2029. So here we are, we actually have a pause of that year, what got incorporated, matters could have been incorporated, but we don't know that until we see it. One final thing that I'd like to point out, if you look at the commercial section of the, of the, of the code, for commercial properties, you use the income approach, and income approach is for properties where you have an investor that buys a piece of property that make, that has intended income on that property. For your, for your income properties, you have apartments, so rentals, condominiums, high-rise apartments, dormitories, hotels, extended stay hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, and that's it. No air bed and breakfast, there's, there's a denial of the existence of bed and breakfast, air bed and breakfast, Airbnb's, VRBOs, they just don't exist in our tax system. So back to that quote, if it's not in the schedule, then you cannot do it. We are not assessing those commercial investment properties as their income, and we should be. That would bring a significant amount of money to our community that can be added into the schedule, the city of Asheville and Black Mountain have zoning processes for them, and we're supposed to be following the city zoning, so we know where some of them are. And this is our, our chance now to tax those for what they are, which is hotel rooms. You can even do a split tax on them, when the person is actually staying there for the one month out of the year, fine, it's a house for that one month, but for the remaining 11 months, it's a hotel room. We're missing money on the table, and that needs to be caught here. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the audience who wish to speak who did not sign up? All right, I close the public hearing at 5:43 PM, thank you all for speaking to us. Eric, I think we have plenty of questions, if you'll return back, and I'll open the floor to Commissioners who have those questions, and I think Commissioner Sloan was up first.
I have a few questions all over the place, I'm just gonna start with the, my first one, which is on the screen about process, I just want to clarify, I guess, what the appeal period is for, and, you know, why, why there's a, a notice of adoption for four consecutive weeks, like what, what is happening after September 16th, in between September 16th and October 17th?
So we are publishing, after this board adopts, chooses to adopt the schedule, we're publishing that in a local paper, letting the public know that the appeal period for the Schedule of Values is open, when someone files that appeal, they'll, they'll appeal to the Board of the Property Tax Commission, PTC in Raleigh, that's where the appeal would go. And what would happen there is you would go to that hearing with the appellant and discuss in a formal hearing what their issue with the Schedule of Value is, and work toward that, they would act as, not a mediator, but you would, but they would rule on whether you need to include that item in the schedule or not, essentially.
Specifically for someone who has a, has an issue with the Schedule of Values, not, nothing about their specific property, but, but the process itself?
Yes, correct.
Okay, gotcha, okay, just wanted to make sure I understood, okay. One other question I had is, I wanted to see if, so there's a conclusion of the, the ad hoc reappraisal committee, and I'm not sure if you, if you Eric, if you're completely familiar with everything that happened in that committee, I sure am not.
Yes, yeah, I attended many of the meetings, I was involved here.
Okay, okay. The, the, I guess it was the director at the time, committed to conducting, publishing sales ratio studies, I believe, at that time, and I didn't know if that's, if A, that had been done, or if it's possible.
I'm not sure if, if we're speaking about the, 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 yeah, the first, the folks at the hearing, commenting during the hearing was the pre and post, I don't remember who committed to that, but we do publish ratio studies to the Department of Revenue, and that's for equalization of our public service companies, and that does include the error that we would have, say if we missed a bedroom or a bathroom, or not bedroom, a bathroom or square footage, include that previous assessment, and that's for equalization reasons for public service.
And is that due-
I can dig up statutes on those things and supply them to you.
Okay, but is that, whatever that information is, is that, is that public, or is that just submitted to Raleigh for?
The overall results, so what we do is we supply the sales data and the value data, and send it to them, and they perform the ratio study, and they publish those every year for each previous year, sometime in March or April, it's not consistent, but they do that for every county in the-
On an annual basis?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We also, we do our own ratio studies as well, we have to do that to track reappraisal, so after January 1, we, we catch what sells after January 1 of the reappraisal, see if we've missed anything in the market, but also so far off in the future that we see where, we can see where the market's going as well. So there's really two reasons to, to do a ratio study.
I think my other question is, and I have a memory of us talking about this a few years ago, but as the market evolves rapidly in our community, or at least it was, evolving rapidly, the sales ratio can drop down below 90%, which I guess is the target, right? So we've talked previously, I think, about doing reappraisals more often, but I remember us deciding not to, and I just wanted to talk through that again to see.
85% is low threshold, and 110% is the high threshold. So the DOR will, will send a letter to the assessment office, the county manager, to say, you need to do a reappraisal within three years.
Okay, if that occurs?
If that occurs.
Okay.
That's right.
But Avril, I have a memory of discussing doing reappraisals more frequently, is that, and I could be wrong, I've been wrong before, but is there, is there a reason why we don't do it more often, I guess to have more accurate data?
It came up before, I wouldn't say we fully discussed it, because we didn't do any analysis on it, but we know that we would need more staffing to do a more frequent reappraisal, so we have not yet studied it and put a dollar amount to it, or how many staff that would take, I made a note to come back to you guys later and see if you want us to do that analysis. I would imagine it will cost significantly more than what we have today, but I don't know that as a fact, that's very anecdotal, so I would want to give it some study and some time to answer that question.
That makes sense, the theory being it would be, you need more people, it'd just be more expensive to do that, it's an expensive, time-consuming endeavor, and would the juice be worth the squeeze, kind of, yeah?
It takes us several years to get ready for one, because when we finish it and get to the appeal process, we almost start over again on reappraisal. To do that more often, we would need us probably, pretty much a reappraisal team, that is all their focus on, so we would just need to know if that's the will of the board for us to study that, and we can do so.
Okay. I think those are all my questions right, right now, as I draw up more, the best way to, is just to, should I email you, you Eric and, and Avril and just go from there? In between now and, and our October meeting?
The 16th.
16th, okay.
Go ahead Commissioner.
One follow-up, Eric, and, and I think you touched on this last time, but I know whenever we had discussed this back several years ago, the concern had been around kind of those, the luxury homes and how they were being appraised versus the homes that were more modest, and can you speak more to that, of what we're doing to ensure that we are being fair, or that we're, you know, that we're being fair and how we're going to proceed with this, can you speak to some of the specifics of what you're looking at doing?
Absolutely, so, those luxury properties, they just, it's a simple issue, they take a lot more time and more hands, so that is one of the things we are doing. So that is one of the things we are doing. Like I said before, we have a couple of appraisers assigned to it. We have our manager, our reappraisal analyst, and the data, some of the data folks at their disposal, I guess you could say. Also, what I spoke about earlier in the building calculation slide was that Q adjustment for unique properties. So we are coming up with new adjustments for this reappraisal based on our historic market data. So where we can assign that to the schedule or build it within it. So if it exists out there and we know about it, we can put it in the schedule. So that is, let's show that. But also, these require a lot more field work, more time out. You know, they're going out and measuring properties and driving through these neighborhoods. You know, so it's really the same process as your traditional residential appraiser, but the properties can be so unique, so large, so different, you have to really do have a lot more time to research and site visit. You know, there's land sales that occur out there that at the face of them, they look, wow, these are high-priced land sales. What's going on here? You have to actually occasionally do some research and call the realtors or call the closing agents. And there could be membership fees enclosed in there and they're not baked into, they're not really spelled out to you. So you really gotta question a lot of things and spend a lot of time on just one or two sales. Does that answer your question?
And then speak to the modest homes, because that's also been the concern, is that we've overvalued modest homes in the past. So speak to what the plan is to address those concerns as well, please.
Yeah, so one of the things we're doing is we have specifically manufactured homes. We have broken those apart and created different size adjustment tables for those. Don't get too far into the weeds on that kind of thing, but that is an underlying issue with those. You can easily overvalue them if you don't break them apart. So we are doing that. We are also site visiting many of these that we haven't been to in many years. Kevin Keane brought a few to our, a couple thousand to our attention, actually. We have site visited everyone, but I think 300 of those. That's ongoing. So we're actually trying to get some contracted employees into the office and we're going to do even more site visits to build toward the end of the year, because we want to make sure by January 1 that we have updated data. So we will be doing that. We will be driving, we'll be driving through and seeing manufactured home parks as well, which that's personal property, but we still want to make sure those values align to what they do with, as if that property is attached to real estate. So there's a lot of pieces to that and it's just very different. Lot, we're also going to be doing an audit on condition on those. Sometimes we can have higher condition than we should have on those as well. And we do get appeals on those as well, and we do get photos of those and we do work through those. But ideally, we would have that information correct before somebody appeals.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Ball.
Eric, just one question for today. Really excited to see a lot of the investments in software and staff and, you know, as we strive to get this better every time we do this. I'm curious if you could speak to some of the, you know, once this is adopted, we have a new system, what performance indicators, what type of analysis is done to show how well our system is working and if there's a, how we help that's reported back to the commissioner of the public? It's maybe a big question, but at least some of those.
Well, there's all kinds of different metrics you can follow. They're recommended by the IWO. So we, you know, ratio studies, that's the big high-level one that everybody talks about, right? There's also coefficient dispersion, those kinds of items that as we roll through this reappraisal, we'll grab those, we'll create reports with those items in them and we'll track in the different areas of the county how these markets are performing against our assessments or how our assessments are performing against the market, right? One of the items that I'm working on right now is actually getting an external ratio study done. So I'm working on that. So not us doing it, but we build that report to be given to the board and published as well.
And then is there, I'm curious, you know, we set the schedule and then home values fluctuate, right? And in this area, they continue to climb. Is there a way that we know or any mechanisms through which we look at the increases in value and say, we're starting to get way off here? I mean, like, is there, how do we, how do we look at increases in home values, aside from the state telling us from their analysis we're way off? But internal mechanisms to say, we're starting to get off there?
Yeah, it really, at a high level, the very first thing you do is a ratio study. So make clear that we do those in the office. We do those for the reason of tracking where we're performing against the market. Doesn't necessarily mean that the previous reappraisal was bad per se or what, you know, however you want to phrase it, but it tells us what we are currently missing and where the market could be going. So that's one indicator of it. You know, we would have, we didn't have a whole lot of luxury sales in the last reappraisal and then now we're getting luxury sales. And we can, we saw that one in the gap from assessed value to the sale price after 21.
Thanks for your work, Eric. Appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Eric, I want to thank you for what we have put in place as a result of the ad hoc committee. But it was mentioned earlier, was it the Keen study that we did? I was under an impression that some of that we had put in place. Am I wrong?
Yes, sir. Yes, we have, we have put the beginning pieces of a lot of these things in place. You know, this is a, some of these things are short-term, but many of these are long-term. It'll take several reappraisals to work through. The goal is to get better every single time, and that's what we're striving for. So we're building our team, we're educating our team, we're getting better at the analytics and those are the goals. So we lean on those studies and that committee to guide us to make decisions for the future. That's what we're doing.
Eric, if I'm remembering correctly, too, one of the ad hoc recommendations was to differentiate in short-term rentals as well as secondary homes. Am I recalling, though, that that would take statewide legislation to change that?
Yes, best to my knowledge, yes, it would.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was my recommend. Are there other questions for Eric? No, no, yes. Please email Eric if other questions come up between now and September 16th. And we appreciate it, Eric.
Thank you all.
All right. We don't have any old businesses this evening. We do have our first item of new business, which is the appointment of our tax assessor. And Sybil Tate, Assistant County Manager, is on her way to share more.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I'm here to share information with you about the vacant tax assessor position. As you know, we have interim appointment with Eric Krieger as our interim tax assessor. However, the regular official position has remained vacant for roughly a year. We had to delay filling that position due to a lien and then additional delay due to cost restrictions due to a lien. However, happy to report that we were able to advertise the position in June and we did begin a national search. And we worked with department heads from across the county to interview the candidates. And it was the unanimous recommendation from that cross-departmental team that Eric Krieger would be recommended as the best candidate for a tax assessor. As you know, it is state statute that only commissioners can appoint the tax assessor. And so I'm here before you with the recommendation and request to appoint Eric as our next Buncombe County Tax Assessor. And that would be for a four-year term, beginning now, September 2025, and ending September 2029. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Sybil? If not, do we have a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eric, congratulations on being willing to step in this really important role as our new tax assessor. Just a couple of notes about Eric. Since serving in this, what I have heard is that he has worked on building staff morale over the last year, enhanced our data quality and processes, streamlined budgeting procedures, and is also working daily toward increasing transparency in the tax assessor's office. This couldn't come at a better time for Buncombe County as we head into our revale and appraisal process. Eric, we congratulate you and look forward to your continued service in Buncombe County. Thank you. All right, our second item of new business, acceptance of state disaster cash flow loans, round three. Melissa Moore, our Finance Director, is joining us.
Hello, good evening. So this evening, I present to you our round three of our state cash flow loan and ask for your approval. So there's just a summary for round two and round one, two, and three. The total after the third round would be 19.4 million. The loan terms for each would be from their anniversary date. The first year would be $1. Year two forward would be 10%, 20%, 30%, where the final year would be the remaining 40% less the first dollar that was paid. So to put into context the amount and how valuable this is to us of the 19.4. To date, on our Helene spend dashboard, we have spent a total of 24.9 million. Estimate of that is 82% will fall within the FEMA guidelines. So that is not a promise. There's no way to promise how much will actually be reimbursed. But it is our goal to seek reimbursement for about 82% of that spend to date, whereas 15% of that has been submitted to our insurance companies for insurance claims, and those are still outstanding. And with a remainder of what's actually been spent is an estimate of about 700,000. So just to put into context and compare that, the 24.10 million that's the actual spend versus the 19.4 from the state cash flow loans to replenish that spend while we wait for those reimbursement funds, that leaves a remaining 5.5 million of our own cash. So just to show you the value of how much we appreciate the state appropriating funds and allocating those to the Western North Carolina impacted communities. So this evening, asked, here to answer any questions, but ask for you to approve the loan to the 5.4 million and also to approve the resolution authorizing county manager to execute the necessary documents related to the loan agreement.
Are there questions for Melissa?
Yes, Melissa. With the FEMA reimbursements and the insurance, how much have we received currently in reimbursements from either of those categories?
So to date, the amount that we've actually received, I believe, is a little bit from debris of the 1.3 million. I don't know, the last one that was obligated was 790,000. And I don't know if we've actually received that. It was en route from federal and it was approved to come through. And so I'll have to double check whether or not we've actually received. But we did get the final approval on one obligated amount just as recent as last week.
Okay. And then with insurance, we've not received any of that yet?
I will speak on behalf of the risk manager. I believe that we have received some funds from our insurance company. It's a reimbursement policy. I'm not sure the exact amount, but I'm happy to discuss that with the risk manager. And I will send you an email letting you know how much we've received, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Are there other questions for Melissa?
I would just add that seeing that pie graph is fantastic and helps visualize this. Staying up late at night thinking about some of these numbers sometimes and it's great to see this visualized. But maybe in addition to that would be, yeah, what's come in versus, in each category versus what's kind of outstanding might be a good way to, for us to track it.
Yeah, so keep in mind, the historical average of FEMA reimbursement is three to six years.
Yeah.
So we are currently working on submitting more and final documentation each week. And so we continue to work through and collaborate with FEMA through that stuff along with our disaster consultant and North Carolina Emergency Management. So we continue to make very aggressive progress each week.
I just had a clarifying question. So on the 700,000 that you said is at risk of not being reimbursable, could you speak to that? Have we applied for some of that and just expect we won't receive it or?
We're going to apply for everything we can. Those have been identified as some of the things that don't really clearly align with FEMA guidelines or we have seen previous disasters to where they have denied them for others. Some of the things we had put in a presentation before back in April on some of the expenditures that we have approved, knowing that they are at risk of non-FEMA reimbursement. And those would be things such as the Helene Resource Center. And so the numbers that we had presented to you before were the total expected costs. Not all of those have reached our actual spend yet. So some of the other disaster costs were like community navigators, some program management. Again, the things that we have estimated before were total comprehensive estimates of what those costs were. They haven't actually all hit our actual spend yet. So comparing the actual dollars of spend versus the amount of the state cash flow loan, just to give you an idea of kind of where our liquidity position is and how much is still at risk. At risk meaning we don't have a reimbursement for that yet. So let's continue to track cash and our liquidity to ensure that we're meeting expectations and maintaining fiscal stability to respond to any other unexpected events that would come along.
And it gives us some useful items to ask our state and federal partners to help find funding for as well. Thank you.
Other questions for Melissa? If not, do we have a motion to approve the state cash flow loan round three?
Motion to approve.
All right, I heard Commissioner Sloan and Commissioner Horton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thanks, Melissa.
And we need a resolution also to authorize the county manager.
Yes. And thank you, Commissioner Wells. My screen went like there for a second. Do you want to make that motion?
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute the necessary documents related to the loan agreement.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The resolution carries. And Sarah, that was Commissioner Wells making the motion and Commissioner Ball second. We move into board reappointments and we only have one this evening, and that is our Tourism Development Authority. And there is a recommendation.
I will make the motion to reappoint Elizabeth Putnam to the TDA Board.
Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Elizabeth, thank you for your continued service to the TDA Board. We move into our board updates and announcements. I believe we had an update on MSD.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Go for it.
I think it's time for us to update, so MSD, and I'm one of the two commissioners, the other is Commissioner Moore, who represents us on the MSD Board. And one of the, something that we've lost track of, I think, or we haven't talked about enough, is MSD came through Helene unscathed compared to what it could have been. And as a result, two, we're working now on two major projects that will affect us for the next 50 years. One is we're updating the transfer station that's adjacent to Carrier Field or across the other part of the park and running two lines under the French Broad River on that one. And the other is we're replacing the station at Weaverville, which will really help with capacity up there as that area is growing. And when you look at the new hospital that's coming and all. But the good news is that MSD, they do an excellent job in preparing for the future. And they are just, the money is set aside. They follow, they can tell us what repairs we're doing for the lines and all now for the next 20 years, really. And they do a good job of following the schedule.
That's great news.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other boards and commissions?
I will share an update from our Land of Sky Regional Council. I'm very pleased to say that we wrote a letter of support for the Healthy Opportunities Program, and that was sent to our entire Western delegation. And also, the. And also, the, Sarah Nichols there has a, just shared that the macrogrid program is a microgrid resilience project, and they were awarded 5 million from North Carolina DEQ for this project. And I think they're gonna, the plan is to have about 24 stationary microgrids and two mobile ones. So that's a very exciting project. And I did agree to accept the position on the Executive Committee as treasurer, so I am serving in that role now for Landis Sky.
Thank you. And I think you all also sent a letter about the HOP?
We did.
Yes.
Yes.
Also supporting that work. So thank you, and congratulations on taking that role. I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting last week. This will not come before us, but an issue that is surfacing, that will come before our colleagues at City Council, is the social district. And so stay tuned for what that's going to potentially look like. And then the Economic Development Coalition met the following morning, and we participated in breakout groups to look at the five-by-five plan and starting to really dig into what some of the goals are. And there is so much alignment and synergy specifically around our recovery and our strategic plan with increasing career wage jobs and recruiting career wage jobs, particularly in advanced manufacturing. So it's exciting to see where those are starting to cross over and how, as a government, we can work alongside our Economic Development Coalition to increase what people are able to earn and to be able to live in Buncombe County. Anything else?
I'll just make a quick announcement. A couple of months ago, I was able to be part of a town hall with State House Representative Brian Turner, City Councilwoman Maggie Almond, and it went really well. So we're gonna do another one of those. We hope folks will attend. That's gonna be on the 11th of September from 6 to 8 at the East Asheville Library with Representative Turner and Councilwoman Almond again.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. All right, we have our last round of announcements. On September 16th, we will have our agenda briefing meeting at 3:00 PM, and following that at 5:00 PM, we will have our regular meeting. We hope to see you here. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. See you in two weeks.